Well. And we and it's back, it's right here where you were giving a hundred and fifteen back.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-three-two, and then we'll run the December bills, the December bills haven't run yet, have they?
No, they'll run from the end of December.
Yeah, at the end of December, they'll run the bill again. Yeah, so. So as of right now, you have a thirty-two dollar credit. And then when we bill again at the end of December for December, then you'll will start fresh. You should be good.
Yeah.
Okay? Wow, okay. Alright, so hers, good, okay. Alright, so you're taken care of. We don't need to go through the other ones, do we?
I probably would.
Oh. Hey.
Hey, Gary, thank you, Danny, thank you all.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Okay. Forty-seven. So, hey, I'm looking at dayballing right now. Are you guys, are you on dayballing? It looks like to me. You have a hundred and two twenty-five, right?
No, if they're getting it back, they'll have a credit. Um, they both have a credit, so, um. Two hundred and thirty-three fifty-four.
That's what I don't want to run into is all of these credits.
Is either for support or?
I just, I think it was catching.
Yeah. Yes, well.
Mm-hmm. Four.
One.
Four. Well, he's billed a hundred and two twenty-five for October, and he paid a hundred and two twenty-five. Then he has billed a hundred and two twenty-five in November. It looks like to me he owes a hundred and two twenty-five. I, I, I would, that two thirty-three fifty-four, I think we. Get away with that a long time ago.
I think you just gave someone, I'm very much speechy.
I know.
I'm gonna make your.
I know you are, I know, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
And I would give her the two thirty-three fifty-four credit. Actually, her bill's two seventy-one or two, so.
Oh.
Really, she would just owe like twenty bucks or something.
So.
Like thirty-two dollars.
So she has two seventy-one. And then we'll be giving back the two thirty-three. That would leave a thirty-seven dollar bill. So they owe thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, and then they're caught up till we bill again in December.
Right.
Correct?
And you said eighty-two cents.
Forty-eight, sorry.
Okay.
Hey. Hey Cody, we're looking at your bill right now. It looks like to me that Cody's way overpaid. Way overpaid. Cody, are you still set up on automatic payments?
Yeah.
Yeah, they take two hundred and some, they just took two hundred and.
Five.
Yeah. Cause it looks like to me between July and September, you paid like four ti- five times.
Yeah, that's what I've been trying to say.
Wow.
The one that's on seven-one was a manual adjustment, um. It was accidentally highlighted as a payment, that that was an adjustment to the account in July for a hundred and five. Just so you know.
And it showed up as a payment?
It's a manual adjustment dash payment on government portal. What happened was, it was the previous balance, if you could go back. Those pictures appear, but when the program was first put into place, they had paid on the old, uh, portal that went to Redline. And we found it in July and applied that a hundred and five dollar payment. From there, so. If you look, it says right on, oh, one, twenty-two.
Confirm that's what it is.
GP, which is government portal, which was our payment portal. One fifteen twenty-two-four is when they made that payment, so. I did apply, we had to apply.
That payment just got lost in the system for like six months, huh?
Right. But we did find it in July and put it on there. I think when the count got created, it was the payment that he made. Like, it was supposed to be for December of twenty-twenty-three, so, on the twenty-fifth. And it got, it, it just got put in with the balance, and it shouldn't have been because he made that payment.
He behind, and then they said, oh, you owe the money, they came and cut off the water. I had to pay, oh, re, everything, recharge, please, turn it back on, all that junk, charge all that. Paid all that, and then current, and then auto pay, since we fixed the auto payment system. Now, I, I just don't know where, it got lost in translation, eh?
He should get a credit, because in May, he did have that hundred and fifteen dollar disconnect fee. And because we didn't find that payment from the beginning of the year, we found it in July, he should get that, that hundred and fifteen dollar credit, cause it shouldn't have been shut off.
Okay.
Um, and, and.
So if we give him back the hundred and fifteen dollar credit?
Yeah.
So if we give that back to him, he's gonna have over a hundred.
Charge ninety-two dollars and six cents, so that should be taken down to the twenty-four oh-six, so he should get the credit. That is the difference to the ninety-two oh-six, and then.
Cody, we fixed his dumpster situation. Cause you have a tote, and you're being charged for dumpster, what is it Cody? You have a. Two yarder, and you're being charged for a tote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still.
Still. Yeah. The thing is true, is like, the minimum is what, one oh-two, something, right?
One oh-two twenty-five?
One oh-two twenty-five, well, the express bill pays, takes out two hundred every month.
Okay, it has the last, yeah, it has the last two months.
I can check on that too.
So let's give you back the hundred and fifteen dollars in the discount, the disconnects that we owe you.
Okay.
That'll leave you with the balance of. You'll have six dollars in credit left until the end of December.
What about the rest of our bill being figured out?
This is, this is all the way from January?
Yes. Because they charged you a hundred and fifteen dollars they shouldn't have. Because that payment got lost, and when they disconnected, because they didn't think you paid, even though you had paid, the system just lost it. You were charged a hundred and fifteen dollars you shouldn't have been charged.
Were any late fees after?
We owe you a hundred and fifteen dollars back in the disconnects.
Just for that.
And he'll still get a bill, so it'll show his credit, and then he'll know when that credit is gone, and then he has to pay a bill.
But you won't owe a bill until January.
But they need to continue to look at the payments, we've paid two hundred and something dollars, and the minimum is a hundred and two. We should have more.
So, if I'm getting, are we? So I'm still confused here, we're not charging nobody the minimum, right, no more, we're doing manual reads, and we're getting, everybody's getting charged correct?
Yes, we have, we have like, we have like eight accounts, and yours is one of them that we need to fix. And yours is one of them.
You should have more credit than just that, shut off notice.
You, so what do you think?
I don't know, this thing's messing up, it says the host mutes me, and then I try to unmute, this thing's acting up. Um, I just wanna, I wanna see the papers you guys got, and then I'm gonna confirm with my bank statement.
Okay, you know what, when the meeting's over, I'll bring you this paper.
Alright.
Are you home? Are you home?
I'm on my way. I'm on my way, yo.
Okay. Yeah, I'll bring you this paper and show you when, when you get home.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And that's all we have here, we'll have to.
It's figured out, at least. Well, that's not all there is to Cody's control of that, of shut off. That previous month, it was a hundred and seventy. And I suspect that. Wrong, and it's, uh. Provider is one eighty-six.
Yeah, I was gonna go down through the little thing, I was charging the minimum first.
Right.
With a little bit here.
Yes, I was just pointing out that that was not all the rest of the difference. Wrong, the disconnect.
So there's more credit?
I, I can get you that total tomorrow, if I can, cause I just have to recalc, you know, like go through and get the credit, cause there's.
Hey Cody.
One, two, three, four, five, and then six, yeah.
Gary found a bunch more wrong with your account.
Yeah.
But we're gonna, cause let's do it tomorrow and figure out how many, how much credit you actually should have. It's more than the six dollars that I was gonna give you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure, cause I know, the express bill pay's been taking the two hundred dollars, and it's like.
Yeah, you can, you can see it, she's got it.
It'll send me emails saying, oh, a hundred and seventy-six dollars, but then express bill pay still takes out more than that.
You have it set up to take out that amount?
I have it set up, set up to take out whatever Vicky puts in the computer. Like, you know what I mean, like it, uh, it does, it asks you to put more, but, but, why would you do that? So I didn't even click that box, mark that box.
I don't like that. So if who, if you place being like a hundred and seventy-two-five, for instance, how could it take out two hundred?
That is the safety limit, the two hundred, so Kayla just needs to understand that.
It still shouldn't take more.
It still should take more than eight. Yeah.
Unless he has standing up to just take out two hundred every time.
So if she had money in the bills to express.
Buddy, we're gonna work on your bill tomorrow.
There is a question on there that asks you, if your bill goes over this amount, what are you, what are you paying the pet pay? We did put two hundred in there. Saying that, it can't go over the two hundred. But it's charging two hundred.
It's paying two hundred every time.
That's what I'm saying, so it's, the express bill pay, that question is either messed up or something, because they ask you, what is your limit that you wanna pay for your water? We put the two hundred in there. To make that the limit, the cap. Don't go over two hundred, basically. But it's been, they've been taking that out instead of making that the cap, the cap.
Yeah.
But if they want to sell that, to have the balance at two hundred, if, for us, it's gonna fade down to actually one hundred.
So then, that's why it's taking the two hundred. Yeah. Yeah, because to sell's leaving you at the balance. It's not clearing it out, so the credit card thinks that your bill really is two hundred and some odd dollars, so it's taking the full two hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
I create the bill.
Okay, we need to take that system. It's not working. Cause I don't need people, their credit cards messed up. Okay, Cody, we're gonna work on your stuff tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, nope.
And we'll have it for you. I thought I had the answer, but I don't. Okay, so tomorrow, you'll work on Cody's?
Yeah.
Let's do Cody's first.
Yeah.
The Kayla's and those others, and then we'll, we'll do it, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Um, is there anything else on water bills?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a, a question, a request on a water bill, a question here, um. My water was disconnected today, and I would, um, gratefully ask if it can be disconnected again, and I probably make a table on Thursday. I'm really trying out, I suppose, with that, my water is off right now, and.
His ticket turned off, I, I tried to call him, I tried it out too, but.
You know, I've, I've, I've actually said free.
He is, he's pretty good.
I would suggest if he's willing to rather payment agreement, which is, we can actually be as part of it, uh, well.
Yeah, I've been, I've been hoping that it could reconnect each way, obviously, I'm hoping to get that, though, as I'm, I'm embracing for that.
Um. The fees, but if you come in tomorrow morning, first day, and he's usually here between eight and eight-thirty, we can set up a payment plan with you, we'll get your water turned back on. And we'll, we'll set it up with you, so you can, so you don't have to struggle with it.
Yeah, it's, you know, with the holidays, so it goes a little while.
Yeah. So she'll be here first thing in the morning, so if you'll come and talk with her, she can help you get that fixed, yeah, like you get your water turned back on, okay?
Thanks. And, and my other question is, usually, they, if I just notice on the door or anything like that.
You notice this, Jay?
Or, I don't know. I don't know if they're like, maybe kind of pretty helpful, too, if I was open to reconnect each.
Well. They did, they did, I know they were on the phone trying to call today and everything. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I, that, that, that.
Just, just know that the last day of the month, if it's not paid, you're probably gonna get shut off. Yeah.
Usually, there's that, you know, that, that.
Yeah. Yes, it will, it will happen, so I don't know why there wasn't one, well, I know why there wasn't one today, is cause Crystal went to the house a couple times, and I know Vicky and Kayla were both on the phone today trying to call. So, but we will get you fixed first thing in the morning, okay? Hold, hold on, I'm looking.
Hey Andre, just so you know too, when I call your number, it says there's special stipulation. So I don't know if it accidentally got put on there, but it would have let me put my call first, so you might wanna check that out, that way we can call you. Um, yeah, cause I heard you guys, you're really good at, you know, letting us know and stuff, and so I was, I didn't wanna do it, but I, I don't have a choice, so.
I don't know, I'm looking, hold on.
Connection to.
What is connection?
Two dollars, or twenty-five for reconnect minutes, risk a twenty-five, just.
Always the way we're just. Twenty-five.
Okay, you'll pay, I pay a hundred dollars on my account.
If you would like to.
Sorry, it's over money, you can spend it however you like.
Okay, so, that's handled. Is it, I'm sorry, what was the motion that was on the floor?
Correct, two C.
Okay.
Go back to October.
Do you have a question? Do you have a second?
Gary made a motion, you sent me it.
I'll be needing a little call.
Hey.
Sorry, she was asking me a question, um. Scott, oh, there you go, Gary.
Hey.
Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Cody?
Cody, you hear us? Oh wait. He's on there, but it says there's a problem with his.
Is there any way that you can tap on it and unmute it?
Hold on Cody.
I think he's not one of them.
Just tap on, tap on, see up in the corners, tap on that blue box.
Yeah, see the blue box in the corner?
The blue box way up in the corner? Upright, Eric, tap on it. Tap on it.
That keeps telling me, host muted me.
I don't know why, I don't know why it keeps doing that. Okay, um, how do you wanna vote Cody?
What are, what are we voting for again?
Um.
Correctly, the feeling just starts.
Yes. Yes.
Um, okay, uh, John?
Yes. Yes.
And I got Eric, great. Yeah, for now.
Everybody. Okay, oh, and, sure, I'm, okay.
And I apologize, I shouldn't have made this motion, the last time this come up.
That's right.
It was, it was, I'm not following through with all.
Hopefully, this is the last time we need to go through this, so hopefully, it's done. So the next thing on there is our pickup, our public works pickup, I've talked extensively with my brother.
Hey, so I don't mean to interrupt, Cindy, but.
When, when they do call, the town, the town, it comes up as scam risk, so people have that type of numbers blocked.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why do you secure that?
I have no idea, I've asked them, it comes up on the phone.
Oh, see, and I never call the town, I always call her cellphone.
For them to change it.
I changed it in my phone, so I can say anything.
So, there's lots of people that don't know they can do that, so you're making to fix it with the phone.
Okay.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, we will. I don't even, do we call it?
Call the phone people.
Call the phone people, I think.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have to, um, change the name that the phone or register has, you have to give it a specific name, or else it's gonna keep doing that.
Okay.
I make sense, I told them, like.
Okay, we'll get that fixed. Yeah, cause I probably wouldn't answer it.
Yes, if you could please.
Okay.
I wouldn't have answered it, but Kaya texted me off the number, and I was like, oh, now I know who it is.
No, that's actually our cell phone number.
That's our town's cell.
Cell, cellphone number?
Landline.
It's not the landline, it's.
Cellphone.
It's a cellphone, landline.
No, I know, I'm saying, the Vicky phone is, it's the one that comes up as a scam, the.
Oh, he said it was the one that texted him. So it has to be the cellphone, because we can't text from our phone.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll, we'll try it out tomorrow, you guys can call me and see if it comes up bad.
Okay.
And we'll get it all fixed.
Give me that Bruno guy. Don't play dumpster repo guy. Uh-huh. Yeah. Okay. He knows it's scam, like. That's why he didn't answer, I'm very sorry. Okay.
Um. Anyway, back to the pickup. It is still at best transmission, he's the guy that put the last back in there, we've talked to, um, Ray, the guy that could do it for us. He says our best bet is to go ahead and pay to have, he said those Dodge pickups are famous for that. We're going out, he said our best bet is to have the guy at best do it, because he will guarantee it. He said he'll warrant, warranty it for at least two years.
Transmission where we're in.
The, the reverse went out of the transmission.
So it's the back.
It's the back end of the transmission.
Randy.
Yeah, just the channel.
Are in the drive-in, okay?
Yeah.
That's what's at the, at the rear end.
Well, nothing, I don't really know.
You just get over there, I do.
Reverse, rear, all ours.
I got you.
Yeah, so he said that's, that's our best bet is to go with him, he said he could do it for us, and can't warranty it. You know, he could, he would gladly do it for us.
So where is this place at?
It's in public, truck's already there.
It's at the one that we need to have it done at?
Yeah, it's sitting in the yard.
And what is he looking at likewise?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
I think so, two hundred.
Well, he's gonna have to tear it all apart, and he said there's metal shavings in it. Which is. But after the mine.
Is there any updates that you can put in it? Is there any updates that?
I think.
Dodge may have out there.
I'm not real sure what whole, uh. I think it needs a hole. Clear it out, put it new.
My question is, is he's, this guy is the same one that did the last one, was it, was it all, and what was that?
Um, six years ago. It's a Dodge thing.
I know, it had a.
Yeah, they're, and when they go, they go.
But.
So.
So is there, is there a possibility of a newer transmission? That would fit in there, that he could put in there, that would. Be more, um, reliable than six years? Like a four and eight? Yeah, but that.
Well, he rebuilt it, it should be all brand new, and he's gonna warranty it for two years?
Yeah, he said at least two years.
I mean, if we, if, I know we got the money in other accounts, and if we can spread it out, I say we do it, cause we need it.
Yeah, we're, we're running thin with trucks.
Cause that's the same thing that was wrong with that other Dodge, and that's why we got this new one, because we didn't wanna replace the old Dodge with transmission.
Yeah.
So we're just going.
The wrong way.
The wrong way here.
So it's up to you guys, I don't know what you wanna do, I, we need it, we need it.
How would we spread out the money, road and bridge, and what else?
Road and bridge. Water, sewer, take a little bit out of each one.
I said we got it, we do it, because they need it.
Okay, I can call him tomorrow and get a, a. Settled stone number.
Pretty sure he told me twenty-eight two, so he's probably gonna stick it there.
And he's good, I mean, that, that place does everybody's transmissions, they're good.
Yeah, I wouldn't go no more than three grand, man.
No, I don't think we should.
I'd say, that we do a vote.
Yeah, we're gonna have to vote. Well.
I, I was sure there was not a.
I can find out. But before we vote, why don't I call and give the damage dirty details? And that way we know exactly what we're getting.
He won't know just exactly what they're trying to do until he gets it done.
Until he turns it apart.
I'm pretty sure he said he tore it apart, cause it's all metal shavings in it.
Yeah, I, Rob just said that.
So I think maybe we should put a cap on it, and we should vote on it now instead of table it in, what would be a cap, three?
Yeah.
Hundred more.
Three grand on the cap, and that should be a complete overhaul.
Yeah.
With hard parts, whatever else it needs to type, because, just because it's got metal filings in there. It ain't gonna be a simple fix for a reverse issue. Could be a planetary, could be a carrier, could be bushings, it could be a lot of different things in there. It could be a flange pack that, uh, totally got chewed up. And you know, just replacing a couple pieces and parts. For twenty-eight hundred dollars is not gonna be the cure to the problem.
Not a Dodge. But he did say, the band, the band that's messed up, the reverse band that was messed up. So if he can rebuild it, is that rebuilding the reverse band, or is that rebuilding the whole? Shebangs.
Well, I'd like to know if there's any updates out there that Dodge just got in place to turn around and replace. Parts that they know that's bad that causes those issues, so that they get replaced with updated parts.
Ask if there's any recalls.
There should be some bullet tips out there somewhere on that transmission.
Yeah.
Of what needs to be replaced. The part part or whatever.
Okay, I'll ask you if there's any recalls that we can pass in on. And no more than three, I think we need to put a motion and follow on it.
I think we should put a.
I checked it out.
Okay.
Three grand on the cap. Provided it, uh, complete overhaul.
Okay, Vicky. Eric? Eric?
Yes. Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Nina?
Yes.
City? I will call him tomorrow, and then I will let you guys know when I find out. Um, new business, water tower. We have a mess. I think that mess is getting fixed. Sounded good today, sounded like good news today, so. Other than people's yards got flooded, but there was nothing we could do about it, we're sorry.
Yeah, we're still working on getting these just set out so they can put these back in. Hopefully tomorrow, keep our fingers crossed, everything will be back together.
Okay.
No guarantees, but you know, when you ain't got the right tools to do the job, it just, it's that much more to do.
I know.
I have a question on that. Once you get that piece back on. Do you have to put water back in the tank to water test?
Um, yeah, so it, it's treated, and we intend to flush it. Um, but since it already has that pouring over to it, when they build a tank, then it should kill it. But we will absolutely flush it.
I don't know how much you'd have to put, how much, what's the pressure when it's full?
Um, we run. Low end of town down towards Eric, so around at sixty.
I mean, the pressure of the. The more water in the tank, more pressure on the line below.
For every two feet of water we have in the tank. We have a little over one pound of pressure.
So your tank is full, it's around thirty-five.
So how far would you give an accurate pressure test, how much water would you have to put in the tank?
Oh, to pressure test, we would have to get up halfway.
And then the fifth rail is we're gonna empty it all out. Well, you'll know right away.
It'll take it a while to build the static pressure, but we should know pretty much.
Right, that, that's what I want.
Wait, that's, it's under contract. They have somebody that's contracted to come every year and do that. It's been done every year.
Can't do it till spring or summer.
Yeah, we're, we're on a yearly contract, they, people come and, and do that, so. We tried to get them to come while it was empty and they wouldn't.
We, we done put in calls, hoping we're gonna avoid the rest of the trip. The ice for grinding of the tank, but.
Yeah, that can work.
It ain't working, so it'll be spring. Till July, somewhere there, I think it's when that's done.
Well, thank you guys for. Make a trip through the valley. Anything else I'd like to thank you guys for taking care of that? I mean. Unhappy people about their water in their yards, but you know what, they, they knew it was coming, I mean. It's not like they weren't warned. Yeah, we couldn't do anything about it.
Upset about it and happy at the same time, because. Mister Terry knows we have chased water running in around pipes and main street and stuff forever. Town in front of the drought, I thought it was coming from, it looks like it's been that leak drought there.
The whole time.
Been that way for years.
What happened over here, did that have something to do with what happened out front here?
Well, it was part right, that water was traveling over two that area along the. It, it's still running back into our hole from roadway out here right there.
Yeah, wow.
Well, hopefully he solved a lot of problems with that little.
I, I, I think so. It's a pain, but, um, my thought is is getting rid of a lot of.
The whole town.
There was a lot of water running back out of us.
And do we know about, do we know about how much we're gonna spend?
Um. Eight fifteen, eighteen hundreds. It was third of the team that changed. Yeah, for the two unions and the mega love, and then whatever the piece of pipe was. It didn't matter at the time, as long as.
Nina can give you the address.
Um, it, it will be C nine hundred plastic, um, it's metal coming out of the tower. Cause it has to be, and then it switches over to the C nine hundred plastic, which is the same stuff they're putting in along the highway. Um, it, it, it's good, uh. Yeah, it doesn't rust out, so. Yes.
Anything else?
Between was, where the issue really was, so.
But anything else with the water tower? That's, it's gonna be done by the, it is supposed to be nice the rest of the week, so.
Yeah.
We just gotta take our time.
We might, cause I have to pour concrete tomorrow, and won't be able to get here till late in the day, so we're kinda iffy on whether we'll have concrete to get done or not.
Well, that's your day one for this.
I don't think anybody's had interruption of water service at all. I know, but I think ours was a little bit too.
It depends on where in the cycle you're trying it.
Yeah.
It is running from forty-two miles to thirty-five miles up there, which that, that's way higher head pressure than what we are here. In about a six or seven minute cycle, uh, the way that oil was running, keeping it on and off, because we have no paint to install it. So yeah, if you turn it on in a week, just wait two minutes.
Wait three minutes, it'll be, it'll be good.
I know it ain't gone to under fifty-five, but like.
Um, public comment, do you have any public comment?
Nate? I made one of the trash matters, let everybody know. And I wanna thank you for letting me come up here from my mouth. So, and also, whatever I'm gonna say, I mean not to offend anybody. And I don't want anybody to take it the wrong way, just be open and listen, and that's all I ask. And I'm not pointing, can't point anybody out that, hey, you did it, or whatever. So first and foremost, I wanna make sure we got the chain of command. You guys are top of the line, right? Council up here, you guys are big boss. And second would be the office, right? If you guys need something done, you call the office, and they tell everybody else what to do, correct?
Well.
When we get any kind of orders or anything, it usually comes from Vicky giving us orders, or they tell Steven, Steven tells us. But, so basically chain of command, you have you guys, then you have the office, then you have maintenance and trash, right?
Sorry.
So, I was not here for last meeting, and I heard it was kind of a.
It's rough.
A, a, a rough outing, and a lot of fingers were pointed at trash. It, as, as far as stuff getting misconstrued and bills and having to get stuff paid. Whatever, issues with trash, and, and all's I'm saying is from this point, from all the way back then to now, we'll take blame, that's fine. It's trash deal, if it has to do with trash, it's on us, and I take blame. Speaking for myself, you can blame equally, but if I'm part of trash, our trash unit is all trash. Where I'm going with this is since there is that chain of command, with you guys, with the office, with us, we're all a team, right? Right? So if something happens, whether it happens with trash, we screw up, we miss something, well, that's on us. If my new driver misses a stuff, well, I'm still part of that because I'm trash, because I have to pick it up, or we don't, we get blamed as trash, we are all one unit. So we get issues or anything like that, we try and take care of. If something's stuck in the office, well, we get that, if it gets misconstrued in the office. Well, we blame bad information or something, Vicky's trying to do, how many people, three, four? She's got a big workload, workload, she gets tied up, she forgets stuff, stuff happens, I mean, we can't do anything. Then it goes back to the council, council let her hell go, because we didn't need it, we can't afford it, so therefore it short sat the office. So then that puts a lot of workload on everybody in the office, which then it has a downsides vital effect, whether it happens from the council. And if somebody, Gary likes doing something this way, and we'll say Eric doesn't like doing it that way, now it's like, hey. So instead of everybody pointing a finger, saying, okay, boy, we installed, or. Nate, you're dumb, you didn't do this, or something like that, instead of pointing a finger, we should all get together and figure out what the problem is, and fix the problem. It doesn't have to be in front of everybody here, but take the management, take Steven, take a couple of you guys, take somebody from the office, get together and figure out a problem. Instead of pointing a finger, if I point at you, say, Nina, you did this wrong, I assure you pointing back to me, but it's, I'm part of that problem. So I think we all need to work together and not put heads and work as a team, it, it doesn't matter what it is. We need to work together.
Nate, I think what it is, we all need to work better on communication, as a whole, office, the council, the people on the field. Everybody needs to have better communication, what happened last meeting was there was two people that got missed, because the roads were muddy. Nobody called, they, they got upset, they called the council, said the council didn't let the trash cars go down the road. And that's not what it was, because we didn't want the trash trucks to go down the road and get stuck like it did at that, uh, place right here. So that's what happened, I think if we work better with our communication, we should have no problems at all. Yep, exactly, that too.
But I mean, in future instances, in future related anything, I think we need you all work together. And not point a finger and say, hey, well, I don't like the way they're doing this, okay, fine, bring me aside and, and tell me, hey, can we work better on this? Uh, where was that, sorry, uh, now. Yeah, I got that. Um, so at the last meeting that I was at back in October. Uh, we had a motion, and there was a motion, and everybody here agreed that I can go out and make new sales and give a discount. Now, when I finally have somebody call back and give a discount, and they're asking for Nate's discount, the twenty-five percent off for the first three months. We honor that, but then say that there is no future honoring that discount. And, and so what I want to know is why is it when this council tells me I can do something, I go out and do it. Somebody finally calls back, and they said they'll do that one, but they're not gonna honor anymore.
And I, I have an answer for you. I think we jumped the gun, I, it's a fantastic idea, and I agree with it, I think we do need to do it. But I think we need to refine it a little bit more, because it's. It's causing them a lot of work, a lot of unnecessary work, except to keep a list of who's doing what. And I think what we need to do, and I mean, this is what I think, we need to get a, like a deposit. So that, say you give them your twenty-five percent discount or whatever, I forget what it was. Yeah, okay, so they take their, their discount first month or so, and then they don't pay anymore. So they just took it just to get the discount. We need to have some, we need to put something in place there to make sure that they don't just take it for the discount and then drop us. So, yeah, so we need to work on it, just, we need to refine it just a little bit.
Easy solution for that is automatic payment. You're getting this discount on automatic, there you go.
Or you can put in place to learn that if you want the discount, you gotta pay two months upfront.
Yeah.
They don't pay the first month, or already paid for the second month, if they don't pay by then, we pull the dumpster, the receptacle, and everything's good to go.
Just, do you see what I mean by refining it, we need to just refine it just a little bit.
Yeah, and, and I mean, even if they take that three months and pay us for those three months, and they quit our service, the last three months of money we got, then we didn't have before. But if you get them on automatic payments, well, it's gonna come out, people usually forget about automatic payments until later, as long as the automatic payment system is working.
Well, that, that would kind of fall back into mine, as say, for instance, if you pay with a check. If you pay, you pay with that check, doesn't mean you're gonna get that money, because that person can stop handling on that check.
But if you have automatic payment set up for a bank account number or a credit card.
But they could stop that too.
Or they could have no money in the bank.
They can actually dispute it, we actually had someone dispute something, and they take it back out of our account, and then they do pay. So, why don't we, do, you don't work up the Fridays, do you?
I work this Friday, it's my Friday work.
It's a slow, like Friday's a slower day if there's something going on.
Yeah.
I can't this Friday, but maybe next Friday. And you sit down, and let's, let's refine just a little bit, we'll get Steven in there. And Vicky, and we'll sit down and we'll, we'll go over it a little bit more, and, and get it to where it is, because I like the idea. I mean, I definitely could do that.
The only thing that gets me worked up on that, and when I found out that we couldn't do that, is I've already told a handful of people. And then now if they call in and say, hey, I want this discount, you say, no, we can't do this, that makes me look like an asshole.
Something out there in place to learn that this discount is only good for three months, six months, whatever, it ain't gonna be from this point forever.
No, it's, it's three months, that's it, that, that's all we've agreed on here, is that pretty much.
People that you, that you're telling.
Right.
We're gonna give you this percentage discount, you know, in the trench, but this is only gonna be good for three, four months.
So you want, you wanna put a stipulation, okay, you have two months set aside if you want this discount, and that's it.
Yeah.
So you're, you want a stipulation, and then, and I'm fine with that, but not fine with telling somebody that they can get something, they call in and say they can't. That's my word.
Yeah.
And I give them my word, and that means more than making.
Yeah, person's only good as a.
And since we are the face of Sugar City, that's why they're picking up their trash, we get to deal with all the ramifications and repercussions and. Sidestorms of everything that's out there.
So yeah, let's, let's sit down, and, and the four of us will, will kind of brainstorm a little bit more and make sure that. Maybe we have a code number that we give you, so that you could say, okay, when you call and give Vicky this code, and that'll be, you know, like. Eight, six, seven or something, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with something.
Um, and then also the other, I know, uh, we had set up a plan when Steven was out for that Monday and that Friday. And I had set for Friday for us to run three trucks, and I know you had said no, because for having Jim come in and work. However, back at that last meeting, October seventeen. However, back at that last meeting, October seventeenth, or whatever, October, when I got approved for this, I said Jen has her application in here and we were looking for somebody to cover for her date. And you said, well, can she come in and work? She didn't have a CDL, but she can come in and work. She can do a drug test. And my, uh, rebuttal to the fact of getting told no, she couldn't do it because she has to take a P test first as well. We let our drivers drive before the P test comes in. They don't drive the big CDL trucks, but we drive the little trucks, so.
They shouldn't.
Right, well, how, when David got hired on.
He did a drug test. He did a drug test, he did a drug test on file and it was less than a year.
He didn't come in and we still needed him to drive.
Wasn't it less than a year that he had done a test for us?
Yes.
Because if it's less than a year.
It was in the system because he had drove for someone else. Like he was a new hire.
It was my understanding that he had done it in less than a year.
No, he was a new hire. He took the drug test and then I think started that trash.
And Proton had it in their system though that he had had a drug test?
Um, I think the clearing house information.
I mean, regardless, he wasn't driving a CDL vehicle, he was driving the little truck, which we don't need to see him drive, right?
Well, regardless, this is my thoughts, I made it. It's a commercial vehicle. So that, well, driving a commercial vehicle, they should have to take a U M.
If you're driving a government vehicle, you should have to drive it, take it away.
But that being a trash truck and being a commercial vehicle, regardless if you have a CDL or not, you should still have a drug screen.
Yeah.
That is our, um.
That is our policy.
Yes, it is our policy.
And that's fine, but Jen was not driving. I had it set up because I can't go do a route by myself, do fifty stops without somebody else in there. And to save the town money, I set it up for her to come in to be independent contractor. She would be sitting in the truck and that's it. So I had my second person. So we can do our fifty stops and then go do Friday's route. But since Jen did not come in, then we had to work Saturday to do Friday's route and I had to come in and bring that truck into service. So alls I was saying is in, in that, if we have something set up, I'm not doing it to screw the town. We are doing it and setting it up to save the town money because we need to save money. And in not doing it that way, we paid extra time for the route to be done on Saturday, extra time for me to come in on my day off and mileage for Jen follow me around, uh, to get that done, which ends up costing us more than the three hours we would have saved for South Route and the two and a half hours for Northern.
I think we should write up a, a policy for contract workers because we do have other people that come in for contract help, especially like summertime.
I don't think we should do, I don't think we should do contract help with our trash. I think that we should, if we're going to have them work, even if it's just part-time, I think they need to be employed, they need to do all of the paperwork and we need to fill it all out.
They do that stuff.
Because.
Ranches?
Uh-huh.
People, they call it day work?
Yeah, but I, I would feel better if she wasn't employed, because as an independent worker, our insurance probably wouldn't cover her if she got hurt. I don't want her to get hurt and be stuck, you know?
I would, you know, like hurting her, taking her down a bloody road, etc.
We don't want, we don't want you doing that to her, you know, but that way she's, she's completely covered. Because independent contractor and day work, like you're talking about, they don't have any perks. I mean, they don't, they don't have, they're not covered. You know, we have all these little problems. I don't want her to get into this. And you know, it could happen easily.
Oh, I know.
You know, and, and I don't want her hurt, yeah. So if we're going to use her every now and then, even if it's only once in a while, we need to hire her as an employee and just put her on like, um, an as-needed help.
And go through all the free.
And that way, you know, she's in the system, it's not a big deal. If, and then she can be scheduled, like if we need help, we can schedule her. That way we don't have to worry about, oh, you know, because I, I worry about independent contractors scaring me.
And I, and I just said it for one, since you gave her somewhat approval.
Yeah, and, and I, I really
Patient, right?
Yeah.
Can she work? Yeah, income and principal flowers.
Yeah.
But she
So let's go ahead and get her hired.
All general, whatever. Um, now on the note of you talking about the dog's truck and saying that you need something to be fixed and no band-aids, correct?
Yeah.
So that goes on to the big trash trucks. Every time we need a approval, and now I say this because I just got the truck back, they finally got its PM, and I've been asking for over a year to get that approved and it hasn't been done. So we just got it back and just got done. With these trucks, we have been putting Band-Aids on. And you can, and say you get a nice deep cut and you need stitches, you need to put Band-Aid on it, well, it's gonna get worse and worse and worse. You can only do so many Band-Aids. Then we get these big expenses and then we hear from the town and we say, hey, I gotta fix this truck, it's three grand. Well, when we say it's before, when it's five hundred, a thousand dollars, we still don't get the approval, then it becomes major. I think we need to see if we can get a different budget to where we can have it, say if it's something we need a tire blows or I need a new, drag link on that truck or a brake that somebody says that it didn't need, which it does need, uh, sorry, anyway, uh, then we can get that done and get it fixed.
Do we have, um, like, say he comes in and says, I, the brakes are screwed up, something's wrong, whatever's wrong. Does he have something he can throw out a hand to you?
No, because it's supposed to be fixed.
Well, and it shouldn't be on the free trip.
So I do it on my free trips, my internal trip.
Okay.
And then we got this.
This is excellent.
But when, but when you, you have your post-trip and your, your trips, do they just go in a file or where do they go? So that, like, we would know, because, I mean, I can't fix it if I don't know.
Right, and go back to the communication.
Yeah, and Steven gets told no so many times, so it's like, okay, we put a Band-Aid on it and we keep running till the shit breaks.
Yeah.
And then that's finally when, okay, it has to get done and now we just
And now we're out of the truck for three or four days or ten days.
Exactly. So if we can say if there's something, give Steven the power, say, hey, yes, I can get this done and then come and say, here we go. That way we don't run into that issue, we don't run into being down a truck.
It is supposed to be allotted in the budgets and then they wouldn't have to get a
And if it's a safety issue, by all means, we want it fixed.
Through the general companies.
And there's, there is
Sitting there to be spent. It is allotted in the budget for those repairs. Assuming that we wasn't spending, it would already be sitting there.
Wait, no, the issue is financial.
The, the issue is Needs to be separated, but even though you budget sixty thousand dollars for truck repairs, that don't mean it's sitting there.
Exactly.
Needed to use it. And that's the issue.
And I think if we did have it, we would not be putting Band-Aids on it all year and not have a big issue.
And I don't want you to drive a whole truck, it's not safe.
So, on that note, it is at our discretion to drive it and I've been driving truck seven and knowing it is not B O T. And if I wanted to be an ass, I could say, I'm not driving this truck and nobody can do anything about it because it's not safe and it's not B O T.
Okay, so let's say, once they do their, their trip, and especially after they get back, they do their afternoon inspection. Somehow that needs to get to Vicki or Kayla or somebody so that she can let us know, hey, Nate's got a problem. And it's a big one.
I think Steven should come in once a month and come and talk to us to let us know, like, hey, Nate noticed this, you know, this other guy saw this, this is wrong with this other truck, truck. That way we are aware, that way, you know, Vicki does get busy, Kayla does get busy, I mean, they get hectic in there, they could forget, they would go with the communication thing. You should come in here and let us know.
Okay, so you, you guys have each this meeting, right? Every other week, you do it every other week and ask for the truck reports and find out, hey, how's the trucks doing? Are they okay? Or does truck seven need brakes? Or does truck two need that electronics? So is miles per, miles per hour is working?
And if you've got something that is a safety issue, I don't want you just telling Steven, I want you to tell everybody, you know? I mean, everybody that's sitting here at this table needs to know.
I thought we were gonna get the brakes fixed with that guy in Lana.
We, we did, um, it's over there now.
Oh.
Oh, trash? Because it would be truck seven and two.
But yeah, make sure these two girls know. I mean, I, I know, and Steven
I'll give you my number, let me know.
I talked to Russ yesterday about that dash thing and, um, I told him to just fix the damn thing, get it up there, fix it, and that we would have to deal with Russ on whatever. It's something that was supposed to have already fixed when it was up there the last time. But it come back in the same shape. Now they want us to wait to haul it back up there, pay them to fix something that they were supposed to fix last time.
So when I picked up the truck, it wasn't there then, because I mean, it actually drove back and it kept speaking. However, when they tore that dash apart and they're saying, oh, it's something with the electronics and something, you knew the transmission, that would have been due with the instrument gauges. That is a wire they did not connect to and it is on there.
It's all there, they're, they're
But yes, they did not hear the transmission update because they didn't have the software. That was the only thing that they did charge for. And they did overcharge for a bunch of shit, but that's how it is. Yeah, and then, um, so and then the other part that I have is, uh, the guys in trash have been here and been loyal for at least over a year with the exception of new driver, Kim Davis. Is there a way you guys can compensate the drivers? I don't care about me, um, but compensate trash for it. Maintenance got compensated substantially and that was talked about last before. Which are the guys who've been here for years and years, haven't been compensated at all?
Well, I am working on the budget, trying to figure it out. So we go into new budget January first. So if we can work it in, we will, we need to have another budget meeting. We, we know, we know that we desperately need to compensate. But, you know, can we go back to the mental situation again?
Right. When you have that budget meeting, the one thing I strongly ask for is for you guys to come up with a compensation package for Larry. And, and Larry has been here for almost ten years. He never got a raise. He retired at sixty dollars an hour. He started at fifteen dollars an hour. And he still comes and helps. He breathes this city and, and he does that nothing. So if you guys can work up some kind of deal for him, hey, thank you. I am a, a gold watch. Do, do something to get recognition for, hey, you are our longest employee. Thank you so much. Instead of, hey, bye, you worked for us, now you're old, bye.
Well, I have you here. Hey, explain, explain to me what, what you did here.
Okay, and tracking on that truck, I, I can't drive that, that trash truck thirty-seven miles. The tracker on there says thirty-seven miles or thirty-six miles, whatever, and that is from here to the dump, Ty Jackson.
Okay.
I needed a ride here, so Jen brought me here and followed me from here to the dump. So I had two people in that truck, so I would get in trouble, go to Ty Jackson and then the drive back to get my truck and then home. Okay, so personal miles on blue vehicle from my house to here is twenty-five miles, twenty-five miles back, that's fifty miles. Thirty-six miles and thirty-six miles is seventy-two and that's from Ty Jackson to here.
Okay.
And that's to there and back. Okay, so that's, why didn't Steven go there, twenty-two miles? So there is the mileage and I had a feeling that would be brought up to
I just, I didn't need a, an explanation because I'm like
So there's, there's where it in, in turn goes back to me saying, having Jen work with me on that Friday would have saved the town more money than not doing it and just running the two trucks.
Okay.
We ran the three trucks, one truck would have been on route for five hours, one truck was on route for probably six hours and then me for two hours.
Okay.
Or three hours, because it's what, fifty-six stops when you run it into three routes and then go do Friday.
I think that's all I have, um, kind of penciling in for the
Two pairs, two problems.
Well, two is, two needs the, the RPM, the tachometer is disconnected.
What is your expecting? Nate, what's your phone number?
Seven, two, zero. Five, one, four, three, three, four, eight.
Going to tell you the thirteenth, I should be here in the afternoon. Next Friday, not this coming Friday, but next Friday.
Oh, that's November.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. I have to check.
If, if you're not working, let me know.
I'm not working, because I work this Friday, so I don't, I don't work many Fridays.
Okay. We might
Somebody's taking the truck to Russ that Friday, I think.
So on the, the twentieth, was it the, that Friday, the twentieth, before Christmas, um, Kim Davis doesn't put it first. So he hasn't set up Said take it, gonna go do the blood flow, one that we got and then take it to Russ though.
Okay.
And, and after that, we should be able to pick it up because it shouldn't take them that long to hook up their stupid computer and just done. Maybe, I don't know.
Alright.
Unless they want to charge extra hours and that's why they hold on to shift them.
Okay, we'll get together, we'll fine tune that, that whole program, the whole discount thing, we'll get it going.
Any other questions, Karine?
I don't have any, anybody else?
I do, but anyways, we're supposed to take, um, you guys do the trash in the morning, you know, down there, we're supposed to check the trucks.
They, they
We do the driver.
The drivers too.
I got it, you're my last time to be around.
Every morning before we start the truck, we check the engine compartment and then walk around and then after that, start your truck. And then you check everything at the end, your instrument channels and your air tanks, your bladders, swarms, everything away.
You turn it in, Steve, right, correct?
At the end of the day, afterwards, after we do our post-trip, during the day, we can have airline breaks, we can have somewhere out there. So it's post-trip, pretty much the exact same thing you see in the morning, with the exception of an extra that has
Because you can do drug tests for
And we start it in and then we tell Steven if we come across any major problems, then he comes in and
I mean, we can get her in the new hire system from state.
No, we can't do it.
Get everything set.
Well, I have to say now, I just want to know who's supposed to turn the engine off.
It's, it, it could either be me or it could be Steven. Once it gets bad enough, again, once it's noted, we can't lose Steven, Steven runs in though.
Okay, so we need a motion, I'm sorry, what did you last name? I can't remember.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, I don't know why I wanted to call her, something else. We need a motion to go ahead and hire her on an as-needed basis. For our time here and there, excess use. Can't let her go with Nate because he'll abuse her.
As needed.
As needed.
I make the motion.
Okay. Second?
Okay.
Okay. And do you want to roll call that? And we'll get her in, we'll get her, she could do a drug test here, just so that she's clear, just so that, and we'll get her in the system. Yeah. Yeah.
See, see, he does, he can visit, we'll see you today.
And can you, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish that motion, come say.
Eric? Eric?
Yeah.
Cody?
Here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Say yes.
Um, Ron?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Um, we'll call her and get her in here, get her tested, get all of her information, get everything done. Oh, she's, she's good.
There's the auctions on Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday, Thursday and some Saturdays.
Oh.
Yeah, she works for LaHunta and she works at
Oh, okay, wrong auction. I was like, auction? Alright, I don't need any more animals.
I have stocks and then my daughter just started there today.
Oh, boy.
Sponsored by them for her to go ahead and say.
Hey, if you have anything else, I will put you on my phone. I will probably call you so you can have my number. We'll go back, okay?
Good.
Alright, anyone? Okay, is there any more public comments? Do we have any public comment on Zoom? Oh. Hold on, just a second. Do you want to run it now? Okay, Terry? Out of gas. Out of gas. Out of gas.
Uh, I'm always quick.
You are on as needed basis.
When I get paid, it shows up as contract labor and no taxes have been taken out. The previous board screwed me on taxes like two years ago.
I think we need a motion to do with Terry what we're doing with her, since we're doing as needed.
I thought that was already decided, but you guys couldn't figure out which. There's one issue with that. What was your last day, hey? You remember, how long has it been? Because I know there is a void in some place. Say, and we're not supposed to hire people back for, for like four months.
Oh, yeah, I think it was April, April or May. Um, I need a motion to.
I make a motion to put Terry on as needed basis to, for credit, he can have taxes taken out of his checks, money pay checks.
Just, uh, like when we plowed snow the other day, he came in and helped him plow snow. You know, or if there's a water break, he knows pretty much where everything is, so he comes and helps. Okay, so, um. Yep, yep, Vicky?
And then second? Uh, Gary? Uh, Eric? Cody? Ron? And Cindy?
No, my other job will not let me leave there. Thursdays, but Fridays, Sunday. Or after hours, I get off at five thirty.
And I appreciate you plowing snow for us. You went by, you look like a snowman, you didn't have anything except stuff to drive in. That green machine with no protection, you just all snow is like, I called Robinson, send him home, please. No, it was horrible. I watched you all day long. Go home. Go, go home and warm up. But, um, okay, and you got your, we fixed your, um, cell phone. Not that all fixed? Yeah, so we'll get that for you. Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. Hey, is there anybody on Zoom that has a public comment?
Evening.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, I actually had a couple of questions. Uh, can you tell me, who is working the controls for Zoom tonight?
Um, one of our office girls, we're having trouble with, it keeps muting people and we're not muting them. So she's sitting there making sure that you're not muted while you're being, while you're talking.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Uh, that's not my question. My question is who is running that? Who's the office worker?
Um, what difference does it make?
Well, it makes a lot of difference because for some reason or another, yet again, this, in this meeting. She is, let me, they're not allowing people into the meeting on Zoom. So that's why there's a, there's an issue here, okay? Then I was trying to have a conversation with the mayor pro temp, because he was having issues where he was mute, being muted and unmuted. And for some reason, I was being blocked from even having a chat. Outside of the meeting with him to say, hey, if you need me to, I'll unmute for a second and let them know there's an issue. But I was instead locked.
We haven't blocked anybody. Everything is open.
I, I, I beg to differ and I can tell you right now, I have the screenshots to prove that. So again, that, that's a problem. And here's another one. You said that this was public comment time, correct? Okay, well, the first speaker was up there for almost twenty five minutes having a conversation with you folks. That wouldn't mean that when you do that, right, it's kind of like the equal, it's like the equal, um. Equal clause, uh, what is it? The equal opportunity clause, right, or equal access for everybody. So once you let him talk for twenty five minutes, that would mean that you would have to allow anybody else that comes up for public comment to speak for that twenty five minutes. I don't understand why, why it is that you guys went on for twenty five minutes. And then. Um, I, I think he said something about, uh, a vehicle and the DOT numbers. It was an issue with.
We didn't say anything about DOT numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause I thought I heard that and I just wanted to make sure, so, you know. Again, I just wanna make sure that everything's okay, you know, I'd hate to see you guys driving around in a vehicle that you shouldn't be driving around in. Especially if it's, if, if it's a hazard. So. That kind of brings me to the point that like I said, is we, we're, we're kind of on the, on that thing where. I don't understand why I was being blocked from having a chat with the mayor pro temp. I, I thought it was a cordial conversation, especially where I was trying to help you guys, because if you guys didn't know that there was an issue with him. How would you know unless somebody could step in and say, hey?
And we were fixing his problem. We were trying to fix his problem. He had a wrong number in there. We got him sent out, we got him on the line.
So that would be a reason to block me in the chat?
We did not block you. Nobody has blocked you.
Ma'am, I have the screenshots.
Well, I would like for you to send those to our email. Do we have a town email? Can you give it to him, please, Vicky?
Town of Sugar City at gmail dot com.
Can you please send those to Vicky? Cause I would like to see those, because nobody has blocked you.
Ma'am, I'm telling you, I was blocked from chatting with the mayor.
Okay, send, send those screenshots to that email. I will have them tomorrow morning and I will look at them.
And Vicky's running the, running the, uh, the Zoom?
No, Vicky is not. Vicky is the town clerk.
No, ma'am, unfortunately for you, my time is enough, because again, the first speaker spoke for over twenty minutes.
That was the town employee that was speaking.
It doesn't matter. She said it was public comment. When she said it was public comment, that means it's open to the general public. Whether he was speaking on town business or not, the mayor was the one that said it was public comment period. Tell me I'm wrong. Again, you, you know, I'm trying to help you to understand that you're, you're breaking rules. So that you understand that these are the things that you need to watch out for. I'm not trying to hurt you. I'm trying to have a conversation with you. I'm not trying to hurt, I'm trying to help. And if you don't understand the rules and you allow people to do things and you're, you're talking, you got a guy that's. Talking town business, you should not call public comment time. I don't think that the coalition for the open meetings would, would appreciate the way these meetings are being run, especially where people are being blocked. From meetings, they're being, they're being told that if they don't give up their fourth amendment right to privacy. You know, their persons papers and effects, that they're being blocked from a meeting. Doesn't work out too well for towns to do stuff like that. It's called civil rights violations, you know? See where I'm going with this, man? You guys are opening yourselves up to civil litigation when you turn around and you do things that are illegal. There was a sheriff not too long ago that turned around and blocked Facebook comments and it cost him a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Because he did it. Do you think that you guys are any different? Doesn't work that way. And here's something that the gentleman that you were talking with, that had the town business, he's incorrect about something. He said that you guys were the top of the heap. He's wrong. The top of the heap is the guy that's talking to you right now. The people, the people that put you in those seats, they're the ones that are number one. You guys are number two. That's the way it works. Keep fucking laughing clown. You think it's funny? You're not gonna be laughing too fucking long when you guys are gonna sit there and you're on the other end of a fucking lawsuit.
Can, can you please, can you please refrain from the cussing?
I don't have to do jack shit.
The lawyer says no. Putting back on.
Yeah, clearly the attorney understands that I can swear, because he understands Cohen versus California now. You know, that nineteen seventy one Supreme Court case. You, you go, you see where I'm going there, Mr. Attorney? You understand what I'm talking about, don't you?
I understand your position. I mean, your, your three minutes public comment is up.
Yeah, but you see, you see something, you see something? Here, here's the problem with that. Like I said, when she turned around and she opened it up, it's a public comment and allowed the first speaker to speak for twenty minutes. It's the equal protection clause under the fourteenth amendment that allows me to do exactly what that first speaker did because of the mayor.
Oh, I understand.
I understand that too, and I'm glad that you understand. And maybe you can explain to her, because I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to get her. To understand the way it is. Keep waving me off, man. Keep waving me off like I'm a fucking lunatic. You know what the problem is? The problem here is all of you. All of you don't understand what you're doing and you need to turn around and spend the time to learn. Hey, you know, there's the classes for CML, they'll help you out. Why don't you have somebody come in from SIRS, they can help you? These are basic things. I will relinquish the rest of my time for you, Miss Mayor. But I ask you and implore you, please, follow the rules.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Did you mute yourself? Okay, is there any other comment?
I do. On my first one, I just want to apologize when you opened for public commentary. I did not know. That would include me, since I'm an employee and I was the first nominator, so I, I do want to apologize to say I'm sorry.
We, we didn't, we didn't realize that, we didn't realize that engaging and having a conversation with our employee would do that.
So everybody out there on Zoom too, I am sorry, I, I, I was pissed, understood it at the time, so I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine, Nate, thank you. Is there anyone else that has any comment? Do you have some comments? Do you have a comment? No? Okay, Michael? Okay, um, Vicky stepped out for a cigarette. I think we should all step out for a cigarette and a drink. Um, let's go to trustees reports. Do you have anything, Eric?
Nothing, I've been working on the water tank, fixing the water, Luke. We've got the parts today, hopefully tomorrow, Friday, the latest, we'll have. The tank back together where we can start filling it again and doing our pressure test to see if we have any more leaks.
Okay, perfect. Anything else?
That's about it for me.
Okay, Ron?
Okay, I think we did terrible. My concerns are satisfied.
I just need to make another trip through town and.
There's a bunch of streetlights in Orkney and Route.
I've been worried about other towns.
I know, I, I'm just telling you, there's a bunch of streetlights in Orkney and Route. Sorry.
I have another couple of emails to that lady.
Got a couple of them, yeah. And I did notice that the light down, down the street for me, it does stay on all day long. I didn't realize that until the other day, so it. I don't know why it doesn't relax. Um, I was gonna ask you something else. I don't know what it was. Uh, please ensure and give that address to Vicky so she can get a thank you card to them.
I do know that is a, is a requirement. All of us. Need to sit down, fire department. If you're saying, uh, disaster plan? Figure out who lives on oxygen.
Who needs help evacuating?
That type of stuff, but we need to sit down with all, all the fire department.
All of us.
All of our department and all of the town.
Yeah, let's, um, start planning that for after the first of the year.
Somewhere you play down.
Well, Janet and I went through after the Orkney fire and we went house to house. And that's how we figured out. And we had a plan in place and I don't think it's still there, is it? Yeah, and that way we have the roof and so do they. Cause that storm we had could have been very. You know, we didn't have power for what? Fifteen hours and I didn't have heat for three. So I mean, we could have, could have evacuated. We need to know what we need to do, so. After the first of the year, when things kind of calm down, we'll, um, get together with fire department, we'll meet, we'll start putting our plan together. We, we've got to have a disaster plan. And I think that's something that Vicky Powell is gonna ask for too. When she gets in your office, she will want a disaster plan. So, you know, a tornado could go through. You know, it could be anything. It could be our water tower going out. We don't have water for, you know, what is our plan?
Pretty sure, but. Waste plan, something there to commit it. It used to be good.
They didn't have one when I was there, but that doesn't mean they don't have one now. And you know, we could even, cause dude's on, you know, he's, we could get him to. Make sure that they kind of coincide with our plan, so that we have a plan back and forth.
Well, I understand that, but we need to figure out what we got going on.
The Orkney fire, this room, we evacuated the entire nursing home to this room. I mean, the entire nursing home was here, the school was all at the gym. You were the one, one of them that brought him over, you know, we, um. We had quite a little mess going on, but you know what? We handled it. We got through it. Then we did our disaster plan, so, and, and we'll, we'll be okay, so. Well, I have guys from Rocky Fort bring me one and they had to come up the back road, so, so, but we. Oh, that's what I wanted to ask you. The Generex generators, have you heard anything?
No, not yet.
He actually contacted Generex. Because that would be the ideal thing is if we had a Generex. So.
I just talked to Terry McMillan. And he's gonna actually get the. What is he, uh, incident, our county incident commander?
Yeah, probably. John McTen, yeah.
Get him on board with writing up a grant for that too.
If I think every town should have one.
Every, every.
Every department should have one. At least one. So, you know, if you can keep this building running, at least we can bring people here, you know?
If we have a fire, bring the power down, they can open the doors to get the trucks out.
Yeah, cause those doors, hey, you can open them. Yes, they are. I have done that. They are not easy to open if there's no electricity. So, but anyway, so after the first, after the first of the year, we'll start on that, get that going. So, Gary?
Well, we set up another budget workshop.
Yes, I do.
For about the first hour of that to be going over the code book.
Okay.
I've got to it. I have a handful of things I've got to address. It shouldn't take long to do it, but.
Sorry, what?
Wow. Are you still on Vicky's time? Oh.
What do you want me to do?
Uh, we are going to have a budget meeting, but he would like. He would like for the first hour of it to be going over the rest of our. Code.
Oh, you wanna go back through? Okay. When are we doing it?
None of us have a life, so it's all up to you.
Speak for yourself.
Well, you're always going, you're always working.
So do you wanna do it on a, you've been doing your budget meetings on Saturdays. You wanna do it on a Saturday again?
No.
No.
See, no.
How long do you think it's gonna last?
The budget part, all day, uh.
We cannot do it the fourteenth, cause that's when we have our Merry Christmas. Cody, what are we calling it? Our Christmas?
Winter Wonderland.
Thank you. So the fourteenth is out.
I can't do it the seventh.
Nobody wants us to do it the seventh. That's a damn.
I can't do it the seventeenth.
Twenty-first, we're getting kind of close to Christmas. Um.
This is a rough month.
Are we busy on Sunday?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the only day we have left.
What about the fourth? Well, that's, so that's.
That's today.
The fourth of January.
We have to have our budget in before the end of the year.
We're gonna have to sacrifice Saturday then.
I'm off at noon.
It's not. It's the two cousins we separated.
Right, yeah.
That's the Saturday, but I would like to address it and get it done and over with.
Plus, if we come in on a Friday afternoon, we could just stay till it's done.
I could do it the thirteenth in the afternoon.
Cody, are you gonna have stuff set up on the thirteenth or no? Are you waiting till the fourteenth?
Hmm, we would just be setting up like.
The party, our Christmas party. Probably here.
No.
We might have to separate. The budget from.
Clean and you have stove and the sink and everything.
So do you wanna do it?
Don't take it.
The twentieth. In the afternoon.
Okay.
Twentieth at one o'clock?
One thirty. One o'clock is smart.
Okay, one oh four.
Gosh. Killin' me. Good. Where'd it go? Is that the guy that was in here?
Yeah, Andre.
Oh.
Andre, yeah.
I might have a key for it because I started the same lock system that we started here over there.
What they, I'm sorry.
What's with your headlights?
I'm glad you don't have a wife.
We're gonna do, work on both or just the one?
Let's just work on all of it and get it all done.
This probably would be two days. And we gotta do the, the budgets, the more important thing. That has to happen before the government's gonna. I mean, you can probably get me out of here in an hour unless you want me to stay for the budget meeting, but I'm not gonna be here till Monday.
You don't want it to end till midnight?
I do not. You don't wanna pay me to be here.
No.
You really say so.
We're trying to save money.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so Friday, December twentieth. At one o'clock, budget meeting. Did you hear that, Cody?
Yeah, I heard it.
Yeah, I heard it.
Okay. Cody, are you asleep?
No, no, I'm up, but I don't know if I'll be there, but yeah.
Do you have anything, Cody?
Only thing I have is I wanna say thank you to Gary and Eric and everybody else involved in the water break. Uh, thank you to the fire department, peanuts, the Grinch, on the back of the fire truck. With the rocking board lights. Uh, donations from the feed lot, uh, Sherry and Gerald Martinez, um, Amy. Everybody who donated everything for these kids is, uh, on the fourteenth. We're gonna have lots of things to do for these kids, so.
Um, if you will get us a list, we can send out thank you cards.
Okay.
For you guys.
And then just again, the, the Christmas thing is fourteenth, winter wonderland, craft wear in the morning. And then the community thing at the night.
I did put it on the water bills, um, for the Christmas day.
Okay, thank you. I have a bunch of stuff, but I'll wait till the twentieth.
Oh, I was gonna ask about the, the meeting that's, the first Wednesday of January is. It's New Year's Day. So, you guys gonna have a meeting on New Year's Day?
No.
Here it is, yeah.
Well, I don't have work that day. We might as well.
I may not, I may not be here. No, I'll probably be on the road.
We'll decide that on the eighteenth. If we wanna move it to another day. Um, anything else? Anybody have anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my report.
I'm sorry, I forgot you.
Okay. All right, so we had a resident that, um. Moved into town in twenty twenty-two. She's just requesting and she has never been laid on her water bill or anything like that. So she's requesting her refund. Or, yeah, refund on her deposit. Um, she's okay with putting it on the account, um, instead of.
Do we give it back after?
Two years.
Okay. Do we have any others that need to go back?
They have to request it, from my understanding.
Is that in your? They have to request it?
I knew that, I, I was told, and whether it's right or not, that they have to fill out this request and then turn in. Their paperwork that they had gotten when they signed up for.
Cause I automatically saw mine back. Do you get yours back yet? Um, they said, I just assumed that we went through them like every six months or a year. If they've been two years, they gave them, well, like with no late payments and no.
Right.
Anything to get it back, but Vicky says they have to fill out a form. To get it back.
Right.
Right? Yeah. I haven't run across the receipt yet. I've got here twenty-five bills. But I was told, uh, by the last administration, well, you have to have the receipts printed in.
But they are tough over here. You guys think we're tough over there? We're tough over here.
You have to prove that you paid us.
That you have paid us.
Have to prove that you gave us the money, we wouldn't turn your water home unless you give us the money first.
Yeah, no. And some stipulations going on here.
We know they did.
I.
Their water.
We can address that when we do the meeting.
Um. I say we go ahead and, and do hers. She filled out the paperwork like we wanted us to land and do hers. And it comes out of the water deposit money that's set aside anyway, so it's there for that.
I think the reason that it's always been to fill out this form to get the water, to get you the deposit back. Is because you're asking, you know, the clerk to potentially keep track of everybody's deposit to automatically get it back. And that, that's probably the problem. So that's why they did it.
Does Cassell track that?
No.
Oh.
I mean, there's not. It was in one there, but I can't do a report that, I mean, well, maybe I can. I can check it out. I'm not sure. If they give me a warning that says this person reached there two years.
And I actually would like to write her a check and have her, she can endorse the check back to us.
Okay.
I'm on a paper trail. That way she has a paper, we have a paper trail. We can go back and say, we wrote you this check on this date. What you did with the, you know, that, see, that's another thing with Water Works. You can go into the system. It'll tell you exactly what day you had your water deposit, if it's been refunded. It's all right there for you.
And in the Water Works, I guess, is there? So much a year, like the other one?
Yeah, it's, I think it's five hundred dollars a year. And when I was messing with it, when I had it, the lady that was my tech support is actually the lady that wrote the program. So she knew the ins and outs of it.
This, but this way you can save a boatload of, of selling all these problems.
Yeah.
Right.
We did get a bill in for Cassell. It was like nine thousand dollars from here, not kidding.
And see, and the problem with Cassell though is we have our bookkeeping system in there too. So if we dump Cassell as our billing, we're gonna need to dump Cassell as our bookkeeping. We need to find a bookkeeping system. So we are either gonna have to go to QuickBooks or something easy that we can track.
And, and we need to make a decision, so.
Yeah, there's all the reports and everything too, in the, the QuickBooks, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I, we do everything out of QuickBooks. I do everything out of QuickBooks.
So far ahead to get rid of Cassell on all accounts.
Yeah, yeah.
It's costly to do it. Besides, we have to pay them.
I paid, and of course, I have twelve, thirteen years of data in QuickBooks right now at work. And it's five thousand dollars for two years. But they're keeping all of my data together. I can go back to two thousand. Fourteen or fif- thirteen.
Critical.
And pulled everything that I need. I can do all of my H R stuff. I had somebody call the other day that wanted an employee to reference from like ten years ago. Hmm, there it is. And it says when he was terminated, what he was terminated for. I mean, it's all right. Everything's there.
We had a customer come in, um, one of our residents, and she said that she uses QuickBooks up there where she works. And they even fill people out of it. Program. That is what they use for everything.
And I would not recommend the cloud-based, um, QuickBooks, cause it's, it's kind of. If you are accustomed to it, it's fine. I can't get used to it, cause I'm used to the web-based. I'm used to the desktop. And they are really different. But the desktop, it gives you everything you need. You can run your P N Ls. You can run a balance sheet every month. You can run your budget. You can figure out where your budget is. We write all of our budget right out of QuickBooks.
So when do we change over? I mean, how long does it take then?
It'll take a couple of months to get changed over. If we started now, we could be changed over probably by February first. But you also have to think that you, all of your payroll is in there. And all you do at the end of the year is you push the button and it does your W Qs, it does your reports, it does your quarterly. I mean, I don't struggle to do, trust me, I'm not gonna do any more work than I have to. I do not struggle at work. Because if I had to struggle, I would be changing something.
Well, we're doing those ridiculous.
She's struggling. They're both struggling hard. And when they struggle, it makes me struggle because I don't know how to help them. You know, I, I can't help them at all. I can't even give them good advice, except you're doing a great job. And that's not a lot of help. Uh, keep going. You're doing good.
It needs something.
Oh, okay.
How soon can we get started on doing that? What we need to do is to put that into place.
I think what we should do is we should really look at the billing programs first and move all of our water billing in town. To something first.
So you think we can get all that information so that we can address that issue next meeting?
Yes. I will have a computer. I will be like I was tonight, not prepared.
And then we can make our decisions at night.
I will, I, I will, um, call Becky clinic. She's the clerk that I'm on support. I think they run Water Works. I'm not sure, but I think they do. And I will get, uh, what she thinks, what they.
And you know, for, for what we're paying for Cassell, we can turn around and be paying for two other.
We could pay a lawyer. We could pay a lawyer.
If you're seeing anything that I'm concerned with, yourself, their employees do, like, the last meeting when I brought it for you guys to look at. I'm afraid they're gonna shut down the program and then we won't have any program for anything.
Yep. Um. Call them tomorrow and ask them if we can hold off until January. And then we will start running backups. Get on the phone with Josh, tell him we have got to have that server done. We have got to have a backup of our system. And tell him our, kind of our issue. Is it worth thinking about changing?
Is, is he able to turn around and pull everything off the cloud?
You should, there isn't a cloud. They decided they didn't put all of our stuff in the cloud. Oh, yeah, that would have been way too easy. That'll, you know, wanna migrate our billing. See, like our bills and stuff is okay. So we might as well do it, do it right the first time and not migrate all of our problems into the new system.
I guess you'll see how that goes.
Yeah. Great concept. Great concept. Do it first, right the first time. Okay. I will have more information for you guys in the next meeting. Anything else?
Yes, um. I did have one of our residents call and was wondering when we are going to be getting the tower measured for it leaning.
It is not leaning. Let me guess.
Technically, it is out six inches from the bottom to the top. We had somebody come measure it. Had them come back six months later, closer again, it had not moved without.
It's in compliance.
I think it's in.
You know, but.
Okay, I'll start our house, she'll get her new house.
Oh, well. Paid our source right. Anything else?
Yes, um, oh my goodness. There was a resident that asked one of the other residents. For concrete to do something, few pieces. They dropped off like a large mound. And they were like, we don't need this. Now it's in my middle of my yard. Can we take that, have the maintenance pick that up and take it to the, the tree pit? Because, um, we use the concrete for the sewer area.
How much is a lot?
I, I have no idea. That's just what she said. She said like a bucket.
They use a periphery.
Like a bucket.
Yeah, if it's a lot, the canal.
Like it's nothing, it's not like massive amounts, but to her, she's older. It is a lot.
Well, have Rob go down and check it out.
Okay. And then, um, I did have somebody call in because, um, you know, we were talking about it at a couple of the meetings about the lights. With the Christmas stuff.
Uh-huh.
Um, they did say that they had seen at Walmart, I believe they said a four-foot candy cane. We put them on the pole, wrap garlands around it and then lights. And that we could use, and it, they were only five dollars a piece. So I said that I would let you guys know. Um. Yeah, so. Just putting that out there.
We, we've gotta do something. Cody, what do you, Cody, did you, um. Said you have people that wanted to donate money for lights to wrap the poles? What, what were we doing? I'm sorry, I forgot.
So, there's a, quite a few people and, uh, senior citizens that would donate their time and some lights to decorate the poles. So let me get with them and then see what they wanna do, which poles they wanna do. And, uh, maybe we could incorporate like a contest, the best pole, you know? But we gotta make sure the extension cord's worth two and then. If anything, I can go on, help them plug it in at the top, but we gotta make sure that the blood's worth.
Yeah, cause we want at least, we want at least our main street done before next weekend for your thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Lock.
Okay. All right, so.
It's good for me.
Have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Oh, wait.
Steve come and talked to us the other day over at the water tank. He questioned us about putting in a water tap out of the tour top. And how long it would take to do that?
Yes.
Who, who is the individual and where is the property?
Um, he did not get his name. He is a potential buyer of a piece of land that is in town limits. That's for sale. Um, I believe it's at your end of town. It's. Um, I believe it's at your end of town, it's like, I think he said, um. Nevada or something like that. Um, I told him that. From previous discussions with Gary, um, and I think you even at one time, cause somebody come in here for a tiny home. That, um, they would have to have water in sewer. Um, and he just, I think he, he travels, so, but he comes from around here. So, apparently he knew a lot of people in Fowler. Um, so he wants to bring his camper. And maybe stay a couple days sometimes when he's on his way to other states. Um, I did tell him about the permitting, if he was staying so many days, they have to have a permit. Um, but I think if it's only a triple base, that doesn't fall in that, that's if he's gonna stay there all summer long. And I did explain that to him, you know, so the price it is, and how much it is for a water tap, how much it is for sewer, I did let him know that it would be extra. A little bit labor, um, we're looking at probably two people, um, to do that. And they told me probably like four to five days to do it all. Um, I told him that maybe it's less, I, but I couldn't really say specifically. So he was, seemed happy with that, and then he would get back to us if he buys the property.
And then, uh, and, of course, you probably don't know the answer to this. If, uh, Rob has gotten the. Setters and the meters set up ready for Medina?
I don't know, I have not talked to him about that. I did talk to, I did talk to Jeff a little bit about that whole mess down there. And Jeff thought would like to set up a meeting with us, just us and maybe Mary. And kind of try to get that all figured out.
It was Mary and then, or Richard?
Richard and Vicky, yeah. Um, I talked to Jeff for quite a while that day after I called you. And he, he wanted to give it all straightened out, cause I've got to get this all straightened out before it becomes a even nightmare.
Yeah.
So we need to, to have a afternoon with him, maybe with you two. I, we could do it this way. Uh, but he's not in town very often on Friday, is he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
He said he, he would make time.
Yeah. Or something like that, I'm sure he would.
And I'm sure that Mary is probably getting ready to go to Florida.
Yeah.
So she probably won't be back until after the first of the year.
So I, I will be talking with him. I will ask him if he could come and be around on the twentieth, and we have a good together in the afternoon. Where that we can all discuss and cuss things over.
Okay, that way he could.
Did you say cuss things over?
Cuss and discuss. We're gonna cuss things and discuss things. Um, he also wants to talk to us about the building across the street. So.
Yeah, he was, are you getting started on doing that?
Yeah, he wants to build that. I don't know what it, I call it a sports bar, but I know that's not what it is.
Oh, he's, uh, he's wanting to do the bar and the grill all in one place.
Mm-hmm.
And then he's wanting to do the other building next to it. It's gonna be a two-story building. Some of the stuff that I've been gathering, I don't know, this is where it's gonna end up being, he's wanting to set things up in there so that. There's gonna be some big windows, you know, like going into a dealership.
Like tuxedos.
Where you can go and sit in a room and you can watch the guys assemble a car. From scratch.
I just wanna drive one. I feel bad seeing if I can drive my single lane.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, well, he's pretty, pretty happy with that mother thing.
Yeah, he doesn't let me touch it. I'm not allowed to touch it.
For good reason.
There is. I'm a good driver most of the time.
That's what Ray mentioned.
Uh, yeah. Oh, Cody made a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Cody. So.
I will get with it, I will get with Jeff.